All right, can you hear Sheila?
I can.
Hear you now.
We're all at attention now. All right, the time is 7:01 PM and I will call this meeting to order, may we have roll call please?
Mayor Raichel. Row Tem Handerhan.
Here.
Trustee Brittenall.
Here.
Trustee Klassen.
Here.
Trustee Flores.
Here.
Trustee Poston.
Here.
Trustee Seifert.
Here.
All right, may we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. All right, you seen it? All right, the first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program, or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items.
No, I did not hear from anyone today.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
All right, we got a couple people sign in here with chambers. First, we will call Brandy Yost up to the table. If you could just state your name and address.
My address too, is that what you said?
Yes, please.
Brandy Yost, 70 County Road 332 in Rifle. And I apologize, Nicole just told me that my reason for being here has already changed, but I'm gonna go ahead and read to you what I had prepared. My name is Brandy Yost and I'm here on behalf of the Cactus Valley Elementary Parent Teacher Association and our vendors who attend our craft fair. One of the PTA's largest fundraisers is a craft fair held every December. In November 2022, it was brought to my attention that our vendors needed to obtain a Town of Silt vendor's license. This was news to me, however, after a discussion with your staff, I felt that when I left that meeting that our issue had been resolved mutually. As soon as I left that meeting in 2022, I changed our application to reflect that a Town of Silt vendor's license is required and included the phone number and who to contact to obtain one. So it was a surprise to me this past year in December 2023, mere days before our event, that your staff contacted me again requesting a list of our vendors to verify if they were in compliance. After multiple discussions going back and forth, a lot of extra time, effort, and frustration on your part and ours, all of our vendors were properly licensed through the town. Please know that compliance has never been our issue. However, I believe the fact that the vendor's license is issued on a calendar year basis, that the vendor's license is issued that way, and the costs do deter people from being compliant. Our concerns are that the majority of our vendors come from outside of Silt, some from outside of Garfield County, and even some from out of state. Purchasing a vendor's license for one single event that happens at the end of the year in December is not economical for small business owners who never attend another Silt event. While $20, the cost of your license, doesn't seem like much when you consider that a vendor has already paid $40 to $50 to reserve a spot, plus make a request to donation on our behalf of $15 or more towards our PTA, and then add in that $20, they need to make a minimum of $75 just to break even. Your staff has repeatedly mentioned that this is good for other town events such as the farmer's market, but as I previously mentioned, most of our vendors are not what I would consider local, and they would not attend any other town events. If they're purchasing this license to be compliant in December, it just serves them for a few more weeks. I'm here tonight to ask you to please consider a compromise with us. I'm not asking for an exemption, but rather for you to please consider amending the town code. I, as well as most of our vendors, would like for your town code to allow for your staff to issue a license good for the calendar year for those who want one, but also have an option for a one-day-one-event license for a lesser fee to not only make it more reasonable for our vendors to purchase and be compliant, but also for the cost to not be a reason that a vendor would back out of our event. That is exactly what happened this year, which in turn caused us to lose money for our teachers, staff, and students. We are a volunteer nonprofit organization. We work tirelessly and endlessly to fundraise solely to increase budgets for our staff and teachers and to purchase items that enrich our students' lives. We can't afford to lose our vendors. The Town of Silt and the PTA, as well as our school, are all community-based organizations, and I just think it's imperative for us to all be able to have a good working relationship. So thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have Shelley.
Hello.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Shelley Corr, 3917 County Road 233, Rifle. And I'm just here to support Brandy as well, but as a vendor side, as I've been to different craft fairs and as a stay-at-home mom, a lot of what we work for is just a few craft fairs a year, and that's pretty much our own income. And keeping those costs down is very important. I know a lot of other vendors that also have difficulties of just signing up with the fee and any sales tax, excuse me. But I recently attended a few, like Rifle and different municipalities where they just gave a form to their vendor who was supporting that nonprofit or that craft fair in which you just charged sales tax and they didn't, the town didn't request a fee. So I just wanted to kind of throw those ideas out here, and I know Nicole had mentioned it already has changed, but our surrounding towns are supporting small-town entrepreneurs, vendors in our small town and seeing those functions thrive, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and that is all that we have signed up in the chambers with us, so thank you guys for coming in. And I assume that we'll get an update from Nicole here at the end of the meeting and just let us know.
I will.
Where we're at, okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay. All right, then moving along, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And it contains the minutes of the December 11th, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting, Resolution Number 1, Series 2024, a resolution designated the place for posting notices per CRS Section 24-6-402-2C, Resolution Number 2, Series 2024, a resolution of the Board of Trustees appointing Colorado River Engineering as a town water engineer and Michael Sawyer is the town water attorney of the Town of Silt, Colorado, a reappointment of Justin Brittenall as the Garfield County Noxious Weed Advisory Board Representative for the Town of Silt for 2024, Resolution Number 3, Series 2024, a resolution amending the Town of Silt Employee Handbook revised January 2024, and an approval of the Garfield County Housing Authority Property Management Contract. Would anyone like to discuss any of those agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I have a question on number five, and maybe Jeff can answer it. Does, just from my information, when this handbook, does the heads of each department have any say what goes in this handbook? I mean, do you talk to them about it, or I mean, where does all this handbook stuff come from? Do the department heads have anything to do with it, or?
For sure, we have a contract with ILG. They are a human resources contractor, as you know. And she, a couple of years ago, looked at our handbook and revised it with all of our input. Everybody had a hand in revising it. What was revised this year were, I think, just some of the benefits changes that were adopted as part of the 2024 budget.
Okay, I thought so, but I wasn't sure, just wanted to ask.
Yeah, everybody gets to raise their hand and be involved in that process.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's an annual thing?
Um.
Or just as needed?
Kind of as needed, I mean, we've got a long list of policies, rules and regulations and stuff that come up during the course of the year and we talk about them, along with 75 ordinances that we need to, code changes that we need to bring. But I mean, there's always something. So yeah, it's, I wouldn't say it's annual, I'd say it's ongoing.
Does it change annually, every year revised or reviewed?
I think it probably is to some degree. Amy, when was the last time before this one that we revised it?
Last January.
Yeah, okay, well, that's annual.
Yep, okay.
Well, it's because we added the the additional, I'm gonna spit this out in a minute, holiday and then where your 401 and vacation started immediately instead of after six months. So it doesn't happen annually, I would say, just whenever the HR Subcommittee and the Board approves new benefits for the employees.
Okay, thank you, that was my question.
Okay. Any other items for discussion, or would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion by Trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Trustee Poston, all in favor? Aye. Aye. All's opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Does the staff or board have any agenda changes tonight?
We don't have any staff, any changes.
The only thing I would say is since we have some of the members of the public that spoke during public comments, if maybe Nicole could just touch on the vendor licensing, right now, is it a make, can these people wait till the end of the meeting?
No, that's fine, yeah, that's gonna be my question too.
All right, we'll go ahead and just put that right before Resolution Number 5. Any other agenda changes before we move on? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to just be an information item, if Nicole could just update us on the vendor license.
Yes, sir. In your recent adoption of the fee schedule, it was changed that the vendors, instead of a $20 vendor fee per year, it's gonna be a $5 vendor fee per event or $20 vendor fee annually. So it does leave the ability for a vendor to do a craft fair in December, the opportunity to not have to pay for an annual license and not get every event that the town does or is happening in the town. They wouldn't have an opportunity to attend those. So it is gonna be a $5 fee per the resolution that was adopted for the fee schedule, $5 per event or $20 for the year. And that's to help because we do have people that attend just one event. And they, they're not able to commit to coming to every single farmer's market or coming to every event that we do. Or there's like what Ms. Yost was saying, she has people that come from out of town, that they're coming just for this one single event. So trying to make sure that we create Silt as open for business and opportunity to to have fairs and bring people into the town, we decided to go on ahead and change that in the fee schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Is that similar to other communities, or how's Rifle and?
It is, yeah, so I did some research into the other communities and Newcastle does the $5 an event or $20, they do a business license for $20 for those vendors instead of a vendor's license. We have to call it something different, and I just don't think that they've updated their code yet or their verbiage because the state of Colorado passed a law that in order to be a licensed business within a municipality, you have to have a storefront, you have to be in that jurisdiction. And so we can't call it, for a vendor that's out of Rifle, we can't call it a business license because they're not actually in the Town of Silt, so it has to be a vendor's license. So I'm sure that once Newcastle, they'll change that verbiage to change it to a vendor's license or something similar rather than a business license. And then Rifle does just a sales tax license. And theirs is $25 for the sales tax license, but it does not, they don't specify vendor business, they just only do a sales tax license. So they have to obtain a sales tax license and they can attend any event.
Does they state, Nicole, has specific requirements for vendor, to supply the license that we need to do like more investigation on and look into the business, or it's just?
No, the bigger thing is just the sales tax. And every municipality is just wanting to make sure that they have an accurate list of who's gonna be submitting sales tax and the record-keeping of, and the retention of the numbers. We collect the sales tax numbers with the vendor's license with the business license. And it's just to make sure that we have our records that we need on who's gonna be submitting sales tax to us. And it's like checks and balances, it's that accountability too, that if we had to audit somebody, we would. But outside of that, we just make sure that we have that retention of record.
Okay, excellent.
So if someone's putting on a craft show, everyone that comes to the craft show has to get a vendor's license for that particular craft show, not just a craft show vendor license, it's for every single, anyone with crafts that show up?
Yeah, so everybody, they remit sales tax individually, so each individual business has to submit the paperwork.
And there isn't any, you know, just to piggyback on Sam's comment, there isn't any, every, you know, I guess vendor or, you know, would have to be separate. There isn't any sort of permit for like a group thing, is there?
There's not unless it's all going to one bank account that they would submit sales tax altogether.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's really just a sales tax. It's just making sure that, that we're able to collect the sales tax that's needed and have the ability to double-check and make sure that it's being remitted, because the state collects our sales tax. We don't do it ourselves. So it's just making sure that we have that documentation.
Okay.
So I know that, I know a few people that do crafts and stuff, and they're always skipping the Town of Silt because it's, I don't know exactly what maybe is more difficult or costs more money to show up and they didn't quite, you know, they don't make as much or whatever. So I know DeBec, a lot of people go to DeBec and do theirs, and a lot of people go at Valley's and do theirs. I just like to make sure we're comparable, so maybe we'll get all the, more business that way, more crafts and shows like that in our area.
It definitely, adjusting the price definitely helps bring more vendors in. And it is showing on good faith that we do want these events to happen in the town and that we are encouraging that to take place.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
All right.
Thanks for coming in, guys.
Thank you for coming in, for sure, yeah.
And thanks, Nicole, for resisting that lower.
No more? Go with the river.
All right, next up is Resolution Number 5, Series of 2024, a resolution finding substantial compliance with an annexation petition for a property known as 129 West Home Avenue, Silt, Colorado. And I will turn this over to Nicole.
All righty. You guys would like to take a seat closer to the microphones. You guys are up. Okay, I have George and Israel Marioni here, as well as Steve Wisely, their representative, that's been helping them through this annexation. They have applied to annex their property at 129 West Home Avenue. This property is not enclaved, but it is, it does qualify for annexation. We're here for substantial compliance tonight, which is where you all would give permission to allow me to continue to work on this and figure out everything else that's needed. I do have a pretty complete staff report here that, the map right now that's up there shows exactly where it's at. It is surrounded by town property on three of the four sides. To the north and to the east are R2 zone districts. And then to the west, there is the Main Street Plaza, which is a PUD, and then to the south is the county. So it, it does qualify for the annexation, that it does meet the 1/6th touching of our, our town limits. And when I'm looking at this, sorry Sheila, I did not, my, the rest of my report must be on the printer. So if you would scroll down just a little bit, right there, the comprehensive plan, when I'm looking at this, doesn't make a ton of sense for that property there. It is listed as service and commercial support. Seeming that it is really surrounded by more residential in the R2 zone district. I would say even though the comprehensive plan does not necessarily support this being zoned and R2 zone, just being zoned R2 for single-family residents, we would still like to see this annexation come through to the town. They did go to the county first and with a single-family permit and had a plan reviewed on. The county came back and said, well, hold on, after reviewing this, it seems as if it would be beneficial to the town and the county if you did not have a septic field or a septic tank and a leach field at this particular location, seeming that it's really, really downtown, off of, off of West Home Avenue. When I'm looking at that, it does make sense that there would be an R2 zone district here and a single-family house more so than a county property or something that is commercial-based. I do have, sorry Sheila, can you go to the annexation map? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we, we do have where there was previously existing water and sewer that were tied to this property. Given everything that was happening with the water treatment plant, we did let the Marionis know that the best thing that they could do was annex into the town rather than trying to get out-of-town tap fees. Because at the time that they started this just about a year ago, we weren't sure where we were gonna be at today, like we do know now. So there have previously been tap fees there. The fees were not continued to be paid, therefore they did relinquish their, their rights to those. So they are gonna have to re-tap onto the system and repay those tap fees. But there has previously been water and sewer that have come to this property.
Sewer as well, or?
Yeah, water and sewer.
Oh, okay, just because you mentioned septic tank earlier, I didn't.
Yeah, because they're technically part of the county and since they lost their, they relinquished, they, they didn't, the previous owner relinquished their water and sewer taps. If they were gonna come through the county without being able to get out-of-town tap fees from us or services from us, they were gonna have to put in a septic tank and a leach field.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, that's not in place right now, is what you're saying?
Nope, they're gonna have to re-tie onto everything.
I see.
Yeah, they would fully dig and mainly because they wanna make sure it's done right. That's what they do, but they wanna make sure that their tie-ons are all correct because that was a while back that they, that they, that that had been relinquished and those had been used. Overall, I find that this annexation is good for the town, even though it does not meet the comprehensive plan as we would hope. I do think that it is a good fit, the R2 zone district is a good fit. It did go in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 5th, and they voted unanimously to approve a recommendation to the Board of Trustees for zoning and annexation approval. And as I said before, this is just for a resolution of substantial compliance. After this, I've, I've slowly but surely been cranking out, trying to figure out what the annexation process is because it's state statute and there's a lot that goes to it. So they went in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for substantial compliance, a recommendation. They're coming in front of you for substantial compliance, and then they'll have a four-week public notice. And so that public notice will go out, our town clerk, Sheila, will send that out. And then they'll come back in front of you with finding the facts. And that'll be when I bring any additional information that we do find back in the annexation map that's in front of you on the screen right now. There are elements on here that are not updated, it says 2022, so they have their, they have Book Cliff working on amending all of that, so that'll be fully prepared by the time we come back for findings of facts. And then the findings of facts will be another resolution. And then we'll have an ordinance as well for zoning and annexation. And so you'll have two readings of those ordinances. And then we can hopefully proceed through, we'll have to record the plat. There's a couple steps after that, but I know that they are definitely looking to break ground in the spring and have their plans ready. They're just waiting for an annexation approval so they can submit those for building permit. I do recommend approval for the resolution of substantial compliance. I also have a recommended motion at the bottom of my staff report. And I am available to, oh, they do not have water rights. They will have to pay the water right dedication in lieu of fee.
Okay. All right.
And what would, sorry, what would that fee is, be?
That.
Out of curiosity?
$1,100 per, $1,100 and something per EQR.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it just, I think that just updated with the new.
It's somewhere in that neighborhood, without looking right at it.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Nicole? Then the applicants have anything they'd like to add to the conversation?
No, other than thanking Nicole for all the work she's doing, for sure. We feel, again, as Nicole feels, and we hope you feel, that certainly a septic tank and a leach field isn't something you want within that area. It's much cleaner, much easier to be hooked into the system here. And, you know, we think that just makes sense all the way around. And that's why we're going through this whole process to get that done, to become part of Silt versus the county.
Nicole just says a comment, another recommendation that was made to have the residential portion of it approved, it was that it was better than having like trucks and other commercial type of businesses going in where you have a lot of residents, right?
Yes.
And that's the current use right now, I mean, it's storage and trucks and things like that, it'd be a much better fit for the, for the community really, and for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Do you guys agree, or?
Yeah, I think, and this is one thing where you do, a comprehensive plan is always a large-scale view of what you want to have happen in an area, and there's always, you know, plots of land that get thrown into something that they, they don't fit the best into possibly. I mean, just to the west of this parcel is a multifamily development potentially. So to have multifamily and then a little county parcel that could be a trucking business or, you know, I mean, you could have horses out there, whatever, just doesn't quite fit in that whole scheme. So by annexing it in and making it R2, you kind of tie that whole thing into being a neighborhood.
Especially if the PUD comes along.
Yes, and then the back of my mind, Mayor Raichel, I had, I was just thinking of the commercial spaces that we do have available and just thinking about the comprehensive plan. Obviously, I'm in agreement of making that neighborhood more of a fitting, but we have a concern of how many commercial areas we are annexing and making it residential. Do we have a concern, do we still have a lot of room and space? That just went in the back of my mind as I was reading the package.
Yes, we, I have looked at the different available spaces for commercial. I believe the reason why, I wasn't here when the comprehen, when the comprehensive plan was created, I believe the reason why they started to kind of move up to Home Avenue and even a little bit farther up to Grand, even like in this whole area right here, I believe the reason why they were starting to try to change that zoning into more of a business zoning was just for potential growth. But I think right now, we have to kind of look at that balance of, we don't have, we don't necessarily have people knocking down our door to increase the commercial in the Town of Silt, but residential is of high use. I mean, it is something that they, that every community needs. And so if we have to maybe not think so much about the commercial growth on the residential streets to the north of Main Street and think more residentially.
Makes sense.
It makes sense currently, it makes sense for where we are today. Maybe not where we were in 2017 when the comprehensive plan was created, but it makes sense for where we are today. And, and today, this is a great conversation, but also today, just so that you know, the, this is for substantial. This is for substantial compliance, but there will be a whole nother. Conversation at the next meeting and that ordinance for zoning that um a decision does not have to be made today for zoning. So if that's something that you wanted to look into a little bit more, you had questions that you wanted me to answer specifically that I needed to look into more. We will have another opportunity to to discuss zoning.
Yeah, and you know, the comprehensive plan is, you know, a guide basically, it's not, you know, the law or anything like that and. You know, back when we did the comprehensive plan, I don't think. That, yes, I mean, I, you know, the the two blocks, you know, I think it, and and I know it says, you know, outside of the downtown area, but I don't think. In reality, much thought was given to, you know, west of First Street on that stretch, other than in front of uh, you know, on Highway six. You know, so yeah, I mean, I agree, then that's that's a better residential spot than commercial anyway.
Well, in this this particular location, it's not like right here where Home Avenue is a through street. West Orchard heading and it heads into the Tara subdivision, so it's not a through street, it would be. It would be slightly awkward to have commercial heading into that residential, a single commercial space. Heading into that residential district, uh into that residential subdivision. It's not a through street, it would, it's a one-way entrance and exit, so it just leads into just a residential subdivision. Thanks Nicole.
Yeah, the better fit is residential.
Yep, so. Okay, this is a public hearing, um, and we're not, and just for a a point of clarification, all we're doing tonight is, is this parcel. The right thing to be annexed into town, zoning will come like Nicole said at a later later meeting. But I definitely think, I mean. We don't want a septic system in town.
No, we can avoid it.
The biggest part of this whole whole thing, so I think it's appropriate to to bring this into town, so. If there's no discussion, I will open up the public hearing, so. Okay. Uh, the time is seven thirty-three PM and I will open up the public hearing for resolution number five, series twenty twenty-four. Uh, persons deciding to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, sir, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay. Do you have any raised hands?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. And would anybody in the chamber, whether they'd like to speak and make a public comment? Okay, uh, seeing none, the time is seven thirty-four PM and I will close the public hearing in an open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number five, series twenty twenty-four. A resolution finding substantial compliance with an annexation petition for a property known as one twenty-nine West Home Avenue, Silt, Colorado.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion by trustee Clausen to approve resolution number five, series twenty twenty-four, uh second by Mayor Protem Handra Hand. Halls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be seeing you guys here again, yeah.
See you soon.
We'll be waiting.
All right. Thank you, you guys have a good night.
Thanks, guys, you too.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Flock camera system discussion. Now I'll turn this over to Chief Lieutenant, I'm not sure if they're gonna come in and join us or join us from Zoom.
Did forget this was meeting night?
I mean, I, I mean, we're right on time, yeah, we're we're two minutes early.
Maybe that's the problem.
This is also Hector from Flock in case um there's any questions that um we can answer.
Okay.
And I was close, Chris, the in lieu of for domestic waters, one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven.
Close.
One hundred and thirty-seven.
Still, I mean, yeah, that could be a substantial amount.
Thanks Chief.
You don't get one?
All right.
I'll go another.
Actually gone up trends eleven seventy-one this year.
Oh, it's not updated on the website yet.
All right.
Oh, it should be.
Nicole.
I get Justin's team?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Come in.
We'll just go ahead and turn it over to you guys.
All right, um, so we have Hector um from Flock is joining us via Zoom. Um, so he'll be available to answer questions again um about the Flock system. Uh, I don't know if you want me to go into uh. Explanation about the Flock system again and.
Maybe just a brief overview.
Okay.
Just for, you know, the people at home.
Uh, no problem, uh, so the Flock system uh is a license plate reader system. Uh, it's currently in use by the Glenwood Springs Police Department. Uh, the Garfield County Sheriff's Office is also, I I got approved and is installing cameras uh throughout the county. Um, the cameras' purpose are to help solve crime, um, find stolen vehicles. Um, find missing people, uh, people that have been entered as attempt to locate welfare checks, um. I, yeah, amber alerts, silver alerts, uh, things of that nature. Um, so it's it's basically to help solve crime.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Are we discussing it?
Yeah, if you have any questions or go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to discuss with us, I think over previous meetings, we had some concerns. Uh, regarding the Flock system and potential like issues that it could cause. My overall uh perception of this is that would be would be extremely helpful to the police department. And that's a tool uh that they would, in combination with other areas, be able to use, like they said, to solve crimes. I looked into their numbers of car recoveries and some of the crimes that they uh. Have solved and it's on the board report and those are really good numbers. Uh, so I I I think that that's a great tool, I believe that if this ever becomes an issue, let's say five years from now, ten years from now. If there is any kind of data breach or misuse, but I really don't see that happening at the moment and um I just see the utility. And um I would definitely support the Flock system for the town and uh for the police.
Um, just a quick question, who, I know they maintain, how long do these cameras last, just a rough idea? I mean, and who replaces them then once, are they hours once we do them, or do they?
The the cameras, uh, they're owned by Flock, um, they uh take care of the installation, all maintenance. Uh, if a camera breaks, goes down for whatever reason, Flock will come out and uh and take care of fixing the camera.
So it's kind of a warranty while we have their system, they take care of it the whole time?
Correct, yeah, and we just pay that one cost.
Okay.
Yep.
So what was the cost again?
It's twenty-five hundred per uh camera.
And then uh subscription?
Uh, the initial contract is two years, um, the first year uh. Uh, includes the installation costs, um, and then after that, it's just twenty-five hundred per camera.
How many cameras?
Uh, in five.
Five, okay, that's what I thought I can remember.
Um, how well has this helped city Glenwood?
In the first year that they had it installed, um, I believe they kept, they caught twenty-five stolen vehicles. Um, within the first three days of uh installing the cameras, they got a stolen vehicle and I uh a missing person.
Okay, thanks.
How far up and down the valley is it, Duhasum, this rifle, or just a rough idea?
Uh, currently, it's just Glenwood Springs, they've got multiple cameras throughout the city. Um, and the uh Sheriff's Office is gonna be installing them from, uh, they're looking at. Basically the Mesa County line, uh, on I seventy all the way up to the CMC turnoff on Highway eighty-two.
How far do they put them apart then, how far, how far are they? Just roughly.
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I I don't know, like.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Good.
So it's only twelve thousand five hundred dollars to have these cameras?
Um, the the first year, um, I believe it was like sixteen thousand to include the installation costs. And then the ongoing uh was uh fifteen thousand. So I think I think we're actually looking at six cameras total.
And you're only gonna have them up up and down Main Street?
Uh, we are looking at Main Street, um, at the overpass, at the ninety-seven overpass. Um, and then also on uh the River Frontage Road.
Okay.
So it's sixteen thousand a year?
Uh, fifteen thousand a year, the first year is uh gonna include the installation costs too. Um, so I think it was closer to like sixteen thousand five hundred or something like that.
Fifteen thousand a year, okay, and then does this determine, can this uh single out make and model of the vehicle?
It can.
As well?
Yep.
It's fifteen a year or have it two years for the contract?
Uh, it's fifteen thousand every year.
Right.
Yep.
So how far east of town would they go to the roundabout then, or a little bit further than that?
Um, we're looking at putting one uh at the town limits on at both ends.
Both ends.
Of Main Street, um, and those cameras would be faced towards Silt, um, capturing the vehicles coming into Silt. Uh, the Sheriff's Office is looking at putting two cameras at town limits. But those cameras would be capturing vehicles coming out of Silt and into the county.
Okay, so if if we don't do it, the county will still have at least a camera on either into town.
Yep, but it's only capturing vehicles going out of town, um, and that would be the only cameras in the Silt area.
Gotcha.
And you guys would lose access.
And we would lose access as well, yep, that's correct.
Wouldn't it be the same having cameras? You'd get the same picture, just the opposite, depending on where they're facing, and then we don't even have to pay for them. And then I'm like, would they, do you think the county would be like, we have a murder in town, oh, you can't see our cameras? Or would they, would they be share with us?
I can pro- provide some um background on kind of how the deployments work, um, so that folks understand um kind of uh the thinking around locations, is that helpful?
Yeah, that answers my question, I guess.
Yeah, so I think what um, something that's important to understand is that each camera captures um one direction of traffic, the rear of the vehicles, so it's. Um, using the machine, the machine learning in order to understand if it's a Toyota versus a Honda, looks at um unique features. Uh, from the rear of the vehicle as well as the fact that every state requires uh rear license plates. And so they're capturing two lanes of traffic, um, uh, you know, a- as cars go away from them, so to capturing the 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 rear vehicles and so. The ones that the county is looking to place um would be exiting the town and what's important to know there is that there is a proactive side. Um, to these cameras, right, so uh your police department will get alerted if there's a stolen vehicle or felony vehicle that enters the town within twenty seconds and so then. Uh, having information on vehicles that are wanted coming in provides them the ability to have that um proactive response. Um, versus uh for investigations, which the uh Sheriff's Cameras will will be helping uh you all uh in those instances as well, but but. Um, um, that is why the deployment uh was structured as it is.
So the cameras only capture the rear of the vehicle in two lanes. So you would actually have the front of one lane and then the the rear of the other lane if you only have two lanes, is that correct?
If it's a two-lane road, um, the way that the cameras are um focused and it lets, and you're saying two lanes, one in each direction. The camera would only be focused on one lane, um, so that it's looking again just at those identi- identifying features and that also helps. Um, improve privacy protections, right, so it's not capturing um people, it's again just capturing vehicles.
So I think one one point I'd really like clarification on as we go into this conversation is we keep hearing. We're gonna lose access to the Sheriff's Department's information, we're not, we're gonna lose access to a dashboard. Where we can access that information. But a car comes through Silt that their cameras pick up, we work with Garfield County. We might have an officer closer, they're gonna notify us that this camera has a hit. So we're not technically losing. All of that information, we're gonna lose a portion of it, correct?
We're gonna. Uh, we're gonna lose access to having that information at our fingertips, we would have to contact the Sheriff's Office. Ask for that information, wait for an approval process. Um, also that they're only gonna have the two cameras going, of vehicles going out of town. So if we have a crime speed, uh, crime spree that happens in town. That involves a suspect that lives in town, that never leaves the town limits. We don't have those cam, we won't have those cameras in town to actually solve Silt crime.
We're not gonna, if that person's in town and they stay in town, we're not gonna catch them leaving town or coming into town. So those cameras on the.
Well, we could because we've also, one of the cameras is gonna be uh placed uh near the roundabout.
The roundabout.
Yeah. Uh, plus the one at the overpass, um, if they happen to go over to like Golden Gate, there's the one on the River Frontage Road. Um, so we've we've got both ends of town covered, plus we've got additional cameras within within the town too.
And these cameras are focused down on Main Street and this, the overpass. Excuse me, um, we still have First Street, um, Seventh Street. That come down into town that aren't covered of stuff coming through. And if we've get a hit on Flock as something coming into town. It's, we can be on it pretty quickly. If we get a hit on, you know, we get a notification through dispatch that it's leaving town. Garfield County's like the rest of us, we're spread thin. Um, they may have somebody in a whole nother area that wouldn't be able to get to it. So if we could catch them coming into town, whether they're already in town. The, of locating the vehicle, we have a higher success rate.
Well, and that's the proactive piece that Hector was talking about, um, capturing the vehicles actually coming into town. We have, we can actually take a proactive approach to it and go find the vehicle. If we're getting alerted after the fact, after the vehicle has already been in town and leaving town, there there's nothing we can do with that.
So if they break into Cactus Valley School and head north, we won't be able to, it won't be on the cameras anyhow.
Well, and it depends how did they get to Cactus Valley to begin with, maybe they came down Main Street and went up first to get to Cactus Valley.
Through reading door cameras, security footage, um, we can get approximate time. And it's like, okay. There's, as the conversation was before, now there's not that many vehicles driving through town. At two, three, four o'clock in the morning when most of this, most of our break-ins happen. So it really narrows down suspects relatively quickly.
So just to piggy, just verify that for me, so most of our break, or what percentage of our break-ins are people that live in town or and or come into town? Is there?
It varies. I, I don't know how to get to those kind of numbers, uh, a lot of our break-ins have been people that live in town. And we've had other break-ins where um they just recovered some stuff in Grand Junction, some stolen property, it's. They start in Glenwood, work their way to parachute battlement into Junction and then start working their way back.
So how does it work exactly, so say there's a stolen car out of Glenwood coming this way? I mean, you guys are obviously probably notified of it, and then with the camera, do you have somebody just. Sitting there watching the camera to see if it comes our way, or how does the camera know to notify? On a certain vehicle, or?
We'll get a text message, um, and an email. Um, alert to that, plus it alerts on our uh laptops, the MDTs in our vehicles, which then provides the picture of that vehicle. The camera that it alerted to and why it's wanted. Maybe it's a missing person, um, welfare check, maybe it's a stolen vehicle and it'll give us those details and then uh. Depending on which camera it, we know where to go set up and start looking for it. And maybe it's coming into town from Coleridge High School and alerts on that camera. And then we get another alert that it passed the camera at the roundabout. And then maybe we get a third alert that it went, it's going over the overpass now. So it gives us that trail to go and try to locate it.
Okay, and then I'm assuming somebody had to enter the information to say, look for this vehicle.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so it could be, it could be a stolen vehicle out of Silt, um, that we've, we've, uh, entered the, the stolen vehicle info through dispatch, um, that way. Or maybe it's a stolen vehicle out of Grand Junction. But another, a law enforcement agency would enter the vehicle and why it's wanted to begin with.
Okay.
Yep.
And once we locate the vehicle, then we confirm it through dispatch. That one, we have the right vehicle, two, we have the right plate and have dispatch confirm the information that we've received. It's not, this takes a hit and we, we do a felony stop on them or whatever, in a stolen vehicle or something, high risk. It's, we confirm it with through dispatch, dispatch confirms that yes, the vehicle we are behind is a wanted vehicle for whatever reason, and then we take appropriate action.
Okay.
It, there's a, there's a double, um, security blanket there, for lack of better words.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
So let's say, go, a person goes to bed, he gets up in the morning, his car's stolen, you can go backwards, you have access to us, to go backwards and look at that then.
Correct, yep.
So, so, okay.
Yeah, we could put the plate, uh, once we get the vehicle infor- information from the, from the owner, we can put that plate number into the Flock system and see if it pinged on any of the cameras. Um, and so maybe it alerted to the camera going over the overpass, maybe then the one at the Golden Gate. And, um, so we know, like, we can go look over, maybe the vehicle got abandoned over at the Golden Gate.
So if a, if a vehicle's stolen in Denver, where does Flock then get their data from, from a stolen vehicle in Denver that might ping on the camera?
It's connected through the, uh, through CCIC and NCIC, which is like, it's the state database and the national database, um, which would be basically like the hot list, um, of stolen vehicles, wanted vehicles, missing people, uh, vehicles entered as an attempt to locate, for whatever reason. Um, so once the Denver officer contacted his dispatch center and said, I've got this stolen vehicle, here's all the info, vehicle info, maybe some details, maybe it was involved in like a carjacking or something. Um, those details would get then entered by the dispatch center into the CCIC NCIC system, which would then connect with Flock. So when Flock is running these plates, the vehi- the plates of the vehicles driving by the cameras, that's how they know that the, that, uh, plate and vehicle's wanted.
Okay. So then my question then, a follow-up on that would be, I would probably for Hector, is who's vetted Flock as a viable company to access those databases? Cause I'm assuming I can't access that database of stolen vehicles in the, in the country. So who, who is it that said Flock has the authority to access this database?
So the way that the, um, NCIC, um, list works is that it's a, we pull from that list and provide that information directly to law enforcement. Um, Flock employees as a whole, as a whole do not have access to that data, that's, um, CGIS, uh, data, right? And so, um, we pull from that national database, which is updated, um, several times a day. Um, we pull from it, actually double the amount of times that it's, it's updated, just to ensure that it's as accurate as possible, and then provide those hits directly to law enforcement. We don't have access, um, to any of your data, right? So any of the footage that's, um, recorded or, um, any of the alerts that are received. Um, in order to get access to that, um, uh, key employees at Flock, um, did go through a, you know, screening process, um, that allows them to set up the systems that allow for our systems to talk to, um, the national database. Um, does that answer your question?
To a certain extent, I still don't know who gave Flock the authorization to access that, that database. Is it, did the FBI tell you guys you can pull from there?
So it's, so the, 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 um, NCIC is, um, something that is held through the Department of Justice. Um, and that is there, they have a procedure in place, uh, for, um, different technology companies, um, that provide services to law enforcement. So right now, your police department, um, you know, um, has access to these databases through other, um, software companies. Um, this is one, um, different version of that.
Okay.
So a question. So this only works on vehicles, right? I mean, what I'm getting at is, let's say somebody goes into Holiday, or to Red River, the motel and robs them and rides off on his bicycle, that, that does us no good, okay.
What's the scope of crimes that this will be looking for, like a fender bender?
It would be anything that a vehicle has been entered into the CCIC NCIC database.
For this color vehicle.
So maybe it could be a, a hit and run suspect that gets entered, um, into the system. It could be any type of reason that the vehicle gets entered.
Silver Alert, Amber Alert, um, Welfare Check, um, we get quite a few of those. Party's not doing well, uh, making statements, um, that can be entered into here. It's, yes, it, it's definitely a crime assistant tool, to fight crime tool, like the computers you have in front of you, but it's not just for crime, it's for, you know, public safety all the way around, runaways, Amber Alert, Silver Alert, Welfare Checks, that type of thing. It's not just focused into catching bad guys. It's got a wide variety of every, of purposes.
Can it be used for, say, uh, there's an accident after a camera and there's suspicion, you look back to see if he swerved him before he, when he went through the camera and stuff like that?
It won't show that.
No.
Yeah, it's, the cameras aren't just recording non-stop.
It's just a still, I assume it's just a still photo?
Yeah, of each.
Rear of a vehicle?
Correct.
Yeah, it'd be like, a lot like, um, the toll roads. Put people to on toll passes, they, they catch the plate, send you a bill. It, you know, runs off the same system, catches a plate and sends it to us if, if it comes up as a hit, for whatever reason.
Do you guys have plans to expand this system if we approve it?
I think, uh, that's gonna depend on how successful it is. Um, that, that's something we could explore, um, and maybe covering First Street and Seventh, uh, going up towards Silt Mesa. Um, I would say that this would be a good, uh, the amount of cameras that we're initially installing is a good test, trial. And if it's successful, then maybe that's something we could look at.
Okay.
I think it's always, I mean, Flock is not a, a huge company from, I mean, there's, yes, they have cameras out there, yes, they're, they're doing something, they're not a, a huge company. Um, and it's always, I mean, this is a, a public meeting, but it's, it's real simple, I think, to say to these guys, hey, we want eight cameras for X number of dollars. Just cause they came to us with a price of what it costs, doesn't mean that there's not a negotiation room in there if we do decide to do this. I think, uh, you know, unless there's, that's already happened, I don't know, there's been negotiations, or if they came to us to the price list and says, this is, this is what it costs. So, um, if they're got Glenwood Springs in Garfield County and, and Silt, then maybe there's a, a bulk discount there for the town of Silt. I don't care what Garfield County wants to spend or the town of Glenwood, cause they have more money than we do.
I'm not sure, I, I think that, uh, we've all been quoted the same, uh, pricing.
Pricing?
Yeah.
So, and I know Mayor Protam has a deep dive into the computer science side of this thing, so.
Is it my turn?
If you would like it to be.
It's your turn.
Um, first of all, I, I want to thank SLPD, I had the opportunity to sit with them for, I think it was nearly an hour, like, to the minute, um, to s- to see the system at work. And more importantly, for them to help me understand, um, what the guardrails are, what the control mechanisms are. I'm a big privacy advocate, probably because I'm a nerd. I still have serious concerns about Flock and with the data and with the lack of validation that they delete it. I, if, if I'm being honest, I don't think they do, because it's in their best business interest not to. I think they say it, but they've never proven it. I also have concerns about privacy because Flock data's been requested as a part of civil cases, divorces, multiple. Whether or not they've been able to get through with those, I don't know. It's, it wasn't publicly available, so I guess that's up to interpretation. Um, there are cases where some law enforcement officers have used the data, and I don't want to even imply that SLPD would do this, um, would use it for non-law enforcement purposes. One glaring example, a police officer in Washington DC used Flock data to extort individuals whose cars were seen at a gay nightclub. And again, we don't have any gay nightclubs, I don't want to imply that SLPD would ever do that. The technology facilitates it, and that's my concern, that the guardrails are human. So we have to trust the individuals using the tool, if we can't trust the tool, and I don't trust the tool. But after having an opportunity to sit with the officers and they printed out the Glenwood Springs policy for usage, um, that gave me some clarification on, on how they would grant authorization for other municipalities to access the data. So please feel free to jump in when I'm wrong, it's inevitable. Um, so let's say Glenwood PD needed access to camera data that was picked up in Silt, or picked up by a Silt camera. They can't simply go online and get it. It's a permission-based system, so SLPD would have to authorize that access. So there's a human control mechanism in place that, again, prevents it from just expanding far and wide.
And that, and the authorization come from the higher-ups, either commanders.
Thank you.
Chiefs or assistant chiefs. It's not one officer going to another one going, hey, can you, you know, got a hit on this flock, can you let us have access? It's, it's, there's a procedure and a process where it's the upper administration, either lieutenants on or on up, that have to grant this, and then there has to be a reason. Hey, just wanna check out your traffic there in Silt for, it, that's not a good reason. If we got a ping off a cellphone for stolen car, missing person, whatever, and we're heading, possibly heading your way, can you, you know, let us in?
But in lieu of judicial oversight, we have to trust our law enforcement staff and, and leadership to monitor and manage the distribution of that data.
And it's really no different than any other tool that we use. As we were showing earlier, that the laptops that we carry in our cars give us access to the world, literally, and the people that live in it. But it's no different than anything we carry on our duty belts. It's a tool, it's a tool we use, and this is a tool that we use every day, whether it's coming our way or not. And once again, there is a human component to it. Trust the people that you instill to protect you and take care of you. Are there issue children out there? Yes, there are. Not kidding, it's no different than doctors, lawyers, Indian chiefs. There, there's always a bad apple in the group. Yeah, unfortunately, that's the world, the world we live in. But this is a tool that we could use to increase our job.
I think one of the other items that I asked for when, when we were meeting was a quarterly report on the usage. So that we don't just grant this approval and then a year later, it's another budget item that gets mixed into thousands of other lines of budgetary compliance in that months-long process. But we didn't agree on what the criteria are that we want to report on yet, that they'll be, they have a dashboard that they provide for transparency, that it can be derivative of that. But I didn't want to make the decision for everybody on what we need reported to us. But just in a more general sense, are, are we okay with, if we approve this, getting a quarterly review of the usage and the sharing and what's being done with the data to ensure compliance? We've talked about them managing compliance operationally, but for us to have at least some visibility and oversight periodically. Right, that's how you keep people in line, is you check in with them. I felt like that was a good compromise for us, where we're not signing a check and hoping it all goes well.
That definitely means to have that checks and balances, I don't think, any, no, no program works without knowing what it's doing, so.
Exactly.
And I believe if we do go with it, decide to go with this program, that it should be a line item.
Yeah, we talked about that as well.
So there, it's not just mixed in with, you know, computer technology and, or computers or special investigation, but it actually has its own line item. So it's easy access for everybody to see.
Does Flock provide a good data type of, uh, forms for you guys to pull?
Uh, they provide a whole, uh, public transparency portal, uh, and they provide that free as part of the, the system. And Hector, I don't know if you can explain further on?
Yeah, certainly. So we've built in, um, uh, robust auditing tool. And I think the mayor kind of alluded to the policy that, um, that the department has in place. So that policy is gonna require, um, periodic audits. Our system will allow, um, the police department, um, to, um, every single search that is performed is, there is a requirement that they enter in a search reason, the policy's gonna require a case. Um, we, the, the audit will show the user of the time, all of the criteria that they searched, all of the cameras, and that, um, lives on forever, uh, so that your department can pull them at any time. Um, that also goes for any cameras that, um, or any data that you share with other departments. And then, um, uh, the other side is, uh, what the public, um, can see at the, at the, you know, on a computer at any time, which is a transparency portal. The transparency portal will allow the public to read the policy, also see who the department is sharing with, how many, um, searches they're performing, um, among other criterias, and that's updated daily.
Thank you, Hector. So you guys would be able to pull this report, maybe every quarter to bring that to present to the board? Is that what you're asking, Mayor?
Yeah, maybe as a baseline, but then after we take a look at the first one, there may be other things that we are uniquely interested, based on our related crime statistics, there may be other factors that we may be more interested in some less. I, I just, I didn't want to make a wholesale decision without opening it up for discussion. And we won't know for sure until we see the baseline transparency report. And then we can cherry pick from that list to see what's applicable to us.
Wha- what I can say is that many, um, elected officials such as yourself, um, what you'll look at, um, in addition to kind of that, um, transparency portion, making sure that, um, you know, the technology's being used appropriately is, um, what kind of crimes are being solved, right? And, um, they'll put that into buckets many times, is what I see cities do. So crimes that you can attach a dollar sign to, vehicles, stolen vehicles recovered, um, other types of, um, you know, um, things that you can quantify. And then the other side is the fact that this helps solve Amber, Amber Alerts, um, homicides, crimes that you really can't attach a, a number to, but are very important. And so, um, typically, that's what I'll see, uh, councils, uh, kind of weighing advocacy as.
I think we also need to be careful about distinguishing between causation and correlation. Some of the data in the presentation is it, it's displayed as being cause and effect. We put these cameras in place and these are the statistical outcomes. And the, they're actually not causal. They're correlations, they're best guess based on the data at hand and et cetera, et cetera. Some of the individuals that are noted in the, in the slide deck, they were asked follow-up questions, um, by two magazines, Wired Magazine did an article- Wired Magazine did an article in 2019 and asked follow-up. One of the slides, for example, Chief Van Hooser, who makes a statement in the slide deck that it's been tremendously effective and helps to solve crime. And when they, Wired Magazine asked him a follow-up, he had to say, and I quote, "To make it very clear, we're not 100% positive the Flock cameras were the difference. But you only get that information when you dive a little deeper." My point is, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of the data that's presented in the slides, but I trust in the SLPD to use the tool effectively, within the constraints that we're going to help build through policy and through reporting and compliance. And if we don't like what we're seeing in terms of a results basis, or we're not comfortable with the data sharing at some point in the future, we are effectively reserving the right to get out of it every year as part of the budgetary process. Again, given that there's no judicial oversight on a case-by-case basis, this is the best we can do to find that happy medium. I think Chief Kat, you said it earlier, it's just a tool. It's more about how the people who are responsible for it use it. So I have to trust the people.
How would that fall into the two-year contract requirement? Can it be canceled each year? Does the two-year portion of it come into play?
We would be committed for the first two years. If the tool's simply not working for us, if we're not solving crime, at the end of that two years, then we could just cancel.
Yeah, you're right. So it's annualized after the first year. Sorry, I misspoke. Yeah.
But still, there's a way out, you know, if it doesn't work.
If we don't like it a year, we turn it off.
Well, yeah.
Pay the $15,000 for the next year.
If you did not use it, I mean, if the tool doesn't work, then, then yeah.
And I'm most comfortable with knowing that other parties, whether it be external law enforcement or other agencies, while I was doing my research, there were some, like, I don't know what to call them, shock and awe-type examples of how it could hypothetically be used. Immigration, some states that may be anti or pro-abortion, et cetera, et cetera, because that's in the news lately, that we're depending on the SLPD to authorize access, full stop. That it doesn't happen without their approval. So those external actors, these are our gatekeepers. And I'm more okay with the platform because I trust them. That, to me, is the difference maker. We also have control over whether or not we keep the data after 30 days. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's going to be done on a case-by-case basis. So there may be some of the images that they need, because cases are pending.
Here it says it has to be connected to an active investigation.
Yeah.
So we don't have no choice in matter. It has to be investigated.
But it's there, it's SLPD's decision, because according to Flock, the system will delete it, unless they say we're going to download it and keep it in our own case file.
If we need to retain anything because of an investigation, because we did get a stolen vehicle, obviously, we would want to keep that image and put that into evidence as part of the case. So those images, we would keep longer. But all the other stuff that we don't actually use and need, that would automatically get deleted in 30 days.
So using $16,000 out of your budget, you're going to, you're going to, there's going to be $16,000 in another area of your budget that you're not going to be able to get. So you would say that this $16,000 tool would be worth that negative on other parts of your budget, other parts of resources that you want?
I think it's worthwhile as a crime-fighting tool, and how much benefit it provides to the public. When Sergeant Baker from Spear, from the task force, was here during the first meeting, he gave some examples of how beneficial the Flock cameras have been just for the sheriff's office. I believe he said that they recovered $1.5 million in stolen property. And that's just from having access to the Glenwood cameras. That's how much it's benefited an agency that works countywide, just having the cameras in Glenwood. So I think the $16,000, what it would cost us the initial year, I believe that that would be money well spent.
And we can trim back on some other things to make that happen, to stay within our budget.
I was just going to say, to piggyback on Trusty Flores' comment, could this, could Valeboard funding, could this fall under that?
No, that's for victims, victims only.
I just wanted to clarify, because, you know, you guys have body equipment in the past, so. And I see Trusty Hanahan's, you know, view on privacy, but, you know, like I said before, a drone could violate your privacy, you know, more than this could, because these cameras are fixed. They don't go anywhere. You know, because like the guy reading water meters with the towns drone, he could be snooping on all of us, for all we know. See, so you could, so there could be other ways people could be, you know, violating, you know, our rights and privacy and all that, worse than this.
And based on my own research, I think it was 23 states have privacy policies in place. So it's, if Flock isn't doing it, well, they're doing it in 23 states now, because they have to be to be compliant. I think that number's going up, not down. I think privacy is becoming more and more of an issue. We see it online. Now we're discussing it in real life. I think if they're not compliant, or they're found to not be compliant, they'll be bankrupted, because they'll be sued off the face of the earth.
Well, a good point Chief made was that the tools that they have in their vehicle, you can access other people's data. You know what I mean? You can, you know everything about anyone in there.
They showed me earlier. I'm glad they don't know anything about me. Not yet.
Not really that much more. I don't feel like it's more, taking away more privacy from the citizens.
Yeah. I have serious reservations about the technology, the lack of Fourth Amendment protections, the lack of judicial oversight, but I have to defer to the people using it. If I trust them, I worry less about the tool. That's the place I'm in. I feel like it can be valuable under certain circumstances.
Well, that's the thing with any tool, though, is it's only as good as the operator.
Yep.
If they're training and they're oversight and they're, the way that they're going to use it correctly or not correctly. Now, you said with having authorization, only certain people can allow authorization. What if those people aren't available due to our staffing issues and stuff? What, as far as you talk about being at our fingertips, but then it's not always at your fingertips immediately because of authorization, having to wait for authorization or something like that?
Just part of living up here.
Well, and I understand that. I'm just, just a concern.
Most of it's a self-onaway. The only two people that would have permissions would be Lieutenant Gronbeck and myself. If somebody else needs something, if they can't get a hold of one of us, they can get a hold of the other one. We've always got our work leashes with us. So it's a matter of picking up the phone, saying, hey, Maker's got a missing person, possible suicidal, heading your way. Can you guys check, check your cameras? Or, hey, we've got a drug car coming our way. Could you guys send, let us have access to the cameras? And we can make it temporary. Know the duration of whatever case they're working with, or Spear, or Glenwood, or Garfield County.
Is it specifically looking for just an individual vehicle? Or is it just everything that comes through during that time period?
It could be either one. But once that's said and done with, you know, Maker, Craig, they really don't need access to cameras in the metropolis of SLPD, Colorado. But we work with Glenwood's Flocks, and as we discussed earlier, for whatever reason, they always end up in SLPD. Either stop, get fuel, munchies, take a break, or just try to get off the interstate as quickly as they can, because they know that people are looking for them. And if we can catch them coming into town and catch them before they start anything, it's, once again, it's just another, another tool to try to do better.
And we need human oversight, because the cameras aren't perfect. You know, at the last, during the last meeting or the last discussion, I asked for any statistics on accuracy or failure rates of the images. There weren't any available at the time. I'm assuming there still aren't. But you can find cases online where people are incorrectly pulled over, arrested, blah, 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 based on an image from a Flock camera. That's why we need the human gatekeepers as the, as the last stop or the last check before a police action is taken or a law enforcement action is taken.
And we talked about this earlier. It's not, the Flock system hits the plate, we pull Marie Ancom to jail. The Flock system hits the plate, the officer gets in behind the vehicle, confirms the plate that they're in front of with dispatch, that this is the proper vehicle, and to confirm it. And at which time, we then stop the vehicle and do what we need to do.
So can you, with the system, would you, can you retroactively look for, like, say, there's a vehicle that's found in Rifle that had stolen merchandise in it? And there were break-ins on the 25th, the 23rd, and the 19th in SLPD that happened overnight? Could, would they be able to retroactively look back and look and see if that vehicle's plates went in and out of SLPD those days?
Correct. Yep, you would be able to put that. Exactly. That's how it's beneficial to us, because then we can help try to get the victims in our community their property back. But you would just put the license plate number into the dashboard, do a search, and that would tell us...
Over the last 30 days?
Correct.
Probably times it came and went.
Yep, and which cameras it alerted to.
So Garfield County is basically going to have the interstate covered then, right?
They...
Basically, for us, this would benefit town.
Correct. Yep.
Main street is about what it...
Yep.
This is a team effort. It wouldn't benefit just our town. Yes, it would. Absolutely. I have no question on that. But just like Glenwood's Flock cameras help benefit SLPD. And Garfield County is going to help benefit everybody else. We, we work together as a team. We're spread out too thin. Everybody's too small to be everywhere. These cameras cut down a lot of that guesswork.
Are Newcastle and Rifle looking at being part of this team?
Newcastle, I don't know. I'd heard a rumor, for lack of better words, that Rifle was getting on board with it also. I've not confirmed that. I've just heard...
Just if you're curious, I mean, it doesn't, it's not even the same either way, but... I mean, it's one of those, the more data points you have, if you're going to be using it, if you're going to use the tool, the more collection points you have for the data, the better. Or not, depending on your opinion on that.
Depending on what side of...
Depending on how well you check, how well you trust the gatekeepers.
Yeah. So for Hector, if a camera goes down, how long is it until Flock has it repaired?
Within 48 hours, we will send out a technician, who is local to Colorado.
So within 48 hours, they'll be dispatched, or the camera will be repaired within 48 hours?
So it depends on the issue, because many times, what we will do is, let's say, a remote restart. There's many issues that can, can be troubleshooted virtually. If, if within 48 hours, that's not possible, or before then, if we identify that it's not possible to fix remotely, then we will schedule a technician who's local to your area to fix, to either replace the camera or fix any issue that may have occurred.
Okay. I would like to, if we go ahead and move forward with this direct staff to, in the contract, have a number of days until that thing gets fixed. I mean, if they say, oh, we can't fix it remotely, and we'll get a guy out there in three months, why are we paying for a camera?
It is within, so we'll schedule within 48 hours to have someone in the town. So within a week is our goal. But certainly, it's something that they can talk about in SLA with our sales team and the contracting folks. I totally understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, I don't want to pay for something that's not, not working. I mean, that, that doesn't make any sense.
Definitely.
And then I'd also like to see in the contract a maximum increase price after two years, so that it doesn't go, year three is 30 grand.
And we, we talked about, LT and I talked about that earlier. If we get into this and the company explodes and takes off with price increase above and beyond what's reasonable, everything's going to go up. Everything has gone up. But if it starts getting out of hand with us, we back out, we back out of the system.
I just think, like, with our trash contract, we work that number, maximum increase before hand. So we don't have to be held hostage in year, year three, making a decision is it worth spending 25 grand to keep doing it?
Yeah. No, we talked about that earlier, and that, once again, we're within year-to-year after our first two years. If the price really starts climbing, we just back out.
So we're locked in 16 for the first year, 15 for the second year, and then locked in for sure for those prices?
Correct. Yep.
And then if we do go forward with it, when would they be installed, or how soon?
Hector, do you have any info on that?
Yeah, so the installation varies, but it's usually about three months for the total installation. That can be a lot quicker if there's, you know, depending on where the cameras are located. Let's say it's a DOT, state DOT right away. Obviously, that's a longer permitting process. But the ones that say there's roads that are in town, those would be installed much sooner.
Hector, are you, your billing cycle is a calendar year or year of installation to year of installation?
It's based on installation.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess, do we have the staff to follow these leads?
Anybody who's on duty. And if we're on call, it'll alert county or rifle which way they're heading into town and out of town.
So those, so if it's going to alert county, then who's saying yes to give them that data? Or if it's in the system? So we just talked about how if, if we want to give that data to somebody, there has to be clearance by one of you two, but now we're talking an automatic hit, we'll send it to...
But that's for searching past info.
Okay, so the...
Yes.
The authorization is the only search past info?
Correct. Yep. And so if a stolen vehicle alerts on one of the cameras, it's going to alert the agencies that have access to Flock. So Glenwood Springs, the sheriff's office, and us if it gets approved.
So it's going to, but can we control that, where we say if it hits on our camera, it doesn't automatically share it?
You, you can. And so just, I, I think it's based, there's two things here, right? It's based on the policy, and so your policy is stating that your department will assess sharing and share on as-need basis. But when it comes to, from what I'm hearing, when it comes to sharing hotlist alerts, that may be something that you're sharing with neighboring jurisdictions, right? But you can turn that off and on. The benefit to sharing with your neighboring jurisdictions is, of course, that collaboration, because they're obviously moving in, in the regional road network, right? And so it's important for the sheriff to know when it's heading in their direction in some way, and vice versa. But that's something that's, again, fully controllable by your department. Typically, what we do see is departments will share kind of in their metro area, right? And so many of the cities in Denver, where most cities have Flock cameras... they're sharing regionally, right? Because the the at least with the hot list, right? Because that helps them follow up on on any stolen vehicles that may be entering their town or leaving.
So from when we sign this contract, when will the how long will the system take to get up and running?
It should be up to three months.
So my question is, we signed the contract. So if it takes three months to install this, do we start paying after that three months? Or is that you know what I mean? Otherwise, the first year we'd lose three months.
Yeah.
It's it's upon validation of your final camera.
So it'd be time is once it's up.
Yeah, once it's up and running, that would be.
I just might just want to make sure.
And then are you able to share with communities that don't participate in flock right away? Like if rifle chooses out, opt out, would it benefit us to get give them the data because there's a car to their way with a guy in a gun or something?
And the flock gets it's not it comes up on our computers and phones, but it goes through the dispatch center. So it's aired out. They won't have the pictures of of the vehicle or the plate or any additional information that that the people with the system have, but they're going to air it out countywide.
So would they be monitored on city property along the road?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
City property or private property of those cameras?
No, they would be focused on the on the road and capturing.
It's going to be on the city property, right?
Correct.
I think I just have to echo Mayor Protem's statement that I I have my my doubts with the the data that flock is collecting and what they may may do with it. But I wholeheartedly stand behind our department to do right with the data that they receive. And I think every tool that our police department has benefits the citizens of silt and the surrounding area. So I would be in favor of going ahead and giving this a shot.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with it. Yes.
I'm on board. I I've had my reservations at the beginning and then having this meeting and actually dissecting it, it definitely seems worthwhile. And and I don't believe that we're really giving up much more or there's going to be the privacy issues being taken advantage here. So yeah, I'm on board.
Trustee Poston?
I think I did my statement at the beginning.
Make sure you're still in.
I'm still in.
We didn't talk you out of it with all of your questions.
No, I love that. Everybody brought their concerns and point of view because what we are trying to do is help protect the silt citizens, but also help protect their privacy the best way that we can. It was reassuring to know how much of this system is capturing, which is basically the usage information. And yes, in any form of work, there could be issues, accounting, banking, police, you know, all different IT. Hospitals have HIPAA, right, to protect their privacy and with their policies. So on the state level, I would think, just like Mayor Henry or Protem Henryham said, that they state has policies for these companies to operate. If not, they would be bankrupt or something to that that side. So there are policies out there as well to help protect with some of their data. And I like to see all of the checks and balances between all the ranges within the department of the police to get those authorizations. So this is just a summary of what I've heard tonight. And it just really helped me reassure that this is a tool that the chief and lieutenant have presented several times. And each time they present it, I get that that's something that they would find useful. That's and I've been one hundred percent behind them as far as trusting and also listening to them when they come to us to ask for something. Yes, we do want to take that evaluation and ask as many questions as we can. But my feeling from them as far as usage and how they feel about the program has always been really strong. And I I support them, just like we all do.
Thank you.
And yeah, after two years, we can reevaluate.
Yep, it was not long term.
You're on on board?
I'd like to see in the contract, though, the repair, like you said, because, you know, all of a sudden, it's a week now. It could be up to a week and, you know, you say I'd like to see some verbiage in there that, yes, here to here or whatever.
We all know that Denver, you can get something done in a week. Western Colorado, you might not get something done in a week.
I know.
Yeah, I would just like to see a clause in there about, you know, if the camera's down for X number of days, then it's X number of dollars off the.
Yeah.
SLAs usually cover that type of a thing. It does whether it's physically broken or or something electronically is faulty or it's the software. SLAs usually cover that, but they definitely have to be in the contract.
In the contract, yeah.
Enforced, for sure.
And price ceiling, right, Mayor?
I mean, I would I would like to see a maximum increase, but I don't know their business model if they're, you know, like the chief said, they're small now. In two years, they're going to be big and they think it's worth fifty grand a month, so.
If it's big, their costs should go down, so it's cheaper.
You would think, but. I did two little questions. Hopefully, they're super quick. Does it catch motorcycles?
Yes.
And does it take pictures of cars if they don't have a rear license plate? Or does. So it so you then you could technically you you can do a search for a red Honda that you might not have a plate for just to see. Is is that correct? Or do you have to search for a plate number?
Correct. You could punch in make, model and within the like the last two weeks. And they'll give you a red Honda that all the red Hondas that came through silt or.
What was it earlier?
It was a blue.
Blue pickup truck and there were over eleven thousand.
A blue pickup truck.
But that was in Glenwood. I don't remember the timeframe.
For a whole month.
Yeah, it wasn't enough where you could say, that's them.
That's the one. I mean, yeah, okay. I think we had a discussion. I think we're all on board. So it isn't action items. I don't know if we have a if we just need a yes. Town administrator, how would you like us to?
I I don't think it's you necessarily need to vote on it. I think just some.
There's definitely consensus.
Like there's some consensus and no strong opinions to the contrary, so I think we just go forward with it.
Okay.
Should we record everybody saying yes or no?
Well, I think like the contract and stuff.
It's an action item. It's already.
Point of clarification is is was this in the budget that we approved?
Yeah, it was not. Because we weren't sure where which direction we were going to go at the time. But I will work with the numbers within our budget or current budget to make it work.
Okay.
Perhaps we could have a consensus that everybody's on board so that we can move forward.
Okay. How about I will make a motion that we direct our police chief and lieutenant to move forward with the contract with flock for the installations of the license plate reading cameras.
Maybe we say town staff.
Town staff. Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. So we have a motion by the mayor to approve town staff to enter into negotiations and contracts with flock, seconded by trustee Britton. All all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Ma'am, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. A grueling question and answer thing for this whole thing, but thank you guys for sticking with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your input.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hector.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Rizlenda amended preliminary plan public hearing. And we have a continuation requested till January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Is there anything you'd like to hit on or just continue?
Nope.
Okay.
No objections to continuing it, I think.
All right. Next item up is the discussion of the lease of town land agreement to support Garfield County's fiber infrastructure project. And I'll turn this over to administrator Lamon.
I think this can be pretty quick, too. You'll all you all know that we've been working really hard to get this broadband service up and running with with Garco as running as the point on this. You'll recall the original grant was for Glenwood Springs and rifle to have this improved broadband service. They got an additional grant that allowed parachute Newcastle and silt to jump on board. We've been moving this thing forward ever since. And Garfield County, by the way, their their finance manager, finance director is the project manager manager, and she's been driving the train and doing a great job of making this happen. There are all kinds of thick and thin, especially that where 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 it related to C dots, issues with them. But we are moving forward. And as I look back on this particular issue, we probably got it a little bit backwards in that we probably should have come to you and said, hey, we're going to have a lease with Garfield County to have a little piece of ground in our in our in our shopyard with a building that they're going to put in and we're going to have a lease with them. But we have mentioned that a few times. We've talked about the fact that this fiber is going to go up Eighth Street right into our backyard there at the shops. It's already done. Building's there, ready to go. This lease just kind of makes it all official. So our job on this would be just to kind of let you know what the that that's that that's going to happen. If you approve the language that's in the packet, then we're going to bring it to the board of county commissioners. If they approve it, we're going to bring it back and stick it in a consent agenda for your approval in the near future. The contract is for one dollar per year and it requires the county to maintain the building, all of its components. And they're going to pay for the electric their electricity and their gas should they need any. If the electricity goes out, there's a generator there that'll run the the program if if necessary. And if you have any questions that I can't answer, I'm going to point at Trey. Or we'll say we can come back and get those answered.
So is a.
Oh, and actually, we may have an attorney on the line to he might be able to help us if there's anything legal on there.
Is the fiber already landed in the C and L?
It's not landed in the building yet. It's landed outside the building. They're waiting on a couple of components. It should be here in the next week or so, and then it'll get pulled into the building.
So in the past, there's been some brief talk about relocating the town shop somewhere else. I'm guessing that this would cement the town shop being where it's going to be now?
No, it's not taking up that much space. I think you have a drawing in the packet. You can see it's just in one little area of the shop.
Well, I understand that. What I'm saying, though, is that it makes the shop building need to be there now and that area that property can be used for something else easily without relocating all that.
Yes.
But.
Sorry, misunderstood.
The the.
I don't have a problem with the town shop being where it is. I'm just.
If the shop were to move somewhere, the building could stay in the park or in the parking lot.
Yeah, I understand. What I'm saying is basically if we wanted to make it into a soccer field in the future, we couldn't now.
The the building is small enough.
Yeah.
This building is very it's twelve by ten or something like that. I forget.
Yeah.
It's not very big.
And it's out in the.
And it's on the edge.
Put a soccer field where the building is.
I'm just mostly just confirming, just kind of looking at as I think it cements that area being used for what's used for now and not something else in the future.
No, it could be used for something else because, I mean, that area is small. You could work around it easily if you wanted to put something else in.
I think in twenty, thirty years, that that area really wants to be a park.
Yes.
So.
I agree.
We we may not be ready to talk about that tonight, but at some point, some point, it's a soccer field, Justin, I promise.
My building is strictly fiber. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is this fiber that we own or are in contract with? Or how does that work? I don't know. We don't need to open a big discussion.
The fibers ran to the building and then we have to come up with the internet provider that's going to take it from the building and give it to the community. It's landed at the building and there will be some discussion. I think Jeff's been in some meetings where Newcastle Silt, Parachute have been looking at one provider to group together to get more leverage and better service in the area if all three of us had the same provider, so. There's still a lot to go.
Sorry, go ahead, please.
No, I was going to say there's just there's still some negotiations and some stuff to be done before the high-speed fiber broadband, whatever, is put into the community.
Right. There will be other network equipment that'll be co-located in the space. So for example, if a cellular company wanted to use that fiber as their backhaul to improve cellular service, hello, are they listening? They they would put their equipment in that facility and cross-connect to the fiber. Anybody who's managing a local ISP, whether it's wired or wireless, is going to have to install their equipment in that space and then cross-connect to the fiber.
And I did mention in my my staff report that the county has put out some requests for interest and they've received five letters of interest. And so I spoke with Jamaica Watts last week and we're the group is the group of towns is will be looking at ways to interview these people to kind of figure out who's the best fit and whether it should be one or more. None of those decisions have been made at this point, and we would fully expect the boards to be involved in those decisions.
So if that's my question, if we're leasing this to the county, does the town still control who and what goes in there?
I wouldn't say we control. No. It's it's, you know, honestly, I don't know the answer to that fully. But I think it's going to be a a shared decision of who we invite in to provide. I mean, if 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 silt, if if parachute rifle and Garfield County decide on company ISP A to come in to their places and silt says, no way, we don't like those, we want ISP B, then I think we would be fully within our rights and encouraged to do that.
Okay, that's just one. I want to make sure we're not giving up our ability to potentially go with ISP B instead of A if everyone else does.
That's not the intent, and I will make sure with the attorneys that that's not in there.
Most ISPs want the economy of scale. So that they they will induce us to do it if we're operating collectively or looking at the proposals, they'll say.
See a reason where.
Their costs of installation and management go down and those costs will be passed on to the customers. It's unlikely that an ISP is going to willingly go outside that standard.
They just love silt so much.
To get silt.
They want to give silt a great deal.
Unless it's Derek Wireless, in which case all bets are off.
Exactly. That's what I that's I mean, that's my concern. Maybe Derek Wireless wants to come in there and if we are leasing it to the building or the county, they say no because we used.
And even then, if we're going through it as as a group, we still have a vote, if you will, a say in the outcome. And it's not singular control.
Control.
But we get to contribute to the decision.
Right.
Excellent.
Okay.
I mean, I know that it says generators quiet, but how often is the backup generator going to run?
Only when the power goes off.
I mean. No, seriously, because backup generators periodically need to run.
Well, it'll it'll test. It has to.
That's what I mean.
What, once a month, maybe?
Yeah, I believe it's either once a month, possibly once a week.
I just I just curious and didn't know if you heard it and didn't, you know, because that house close, I didn't know.
Yeah, I haven't heard it run yet.
Okay.
They're so.
These new generators are so quiet.
And I'm guessing you wouldn't run it to test in the middle of the night. If it's going to test, it's going to test.
It tests usually.
It tests usually, I think hours test, like you can set it, like test at noon or something, middle of the daytime, in the middle of the week.
Okay.
So it doesn't test on the weekends and evenings and whatever.
Yeah, that was my only, you know, question or concern, you know, just not to disturb the neighbors over there.
It's a good question. I was surprised how big it is. It's a, it's a pretty good-sized generator for such a small building, so, but there's a lot of electrical-
Running natural gas?
Yeah, it runs on natural gas.
Okay. This is an action item. Anyone want to make a motion? It'd be to, there's already language, and the staff is just recommending the approval of the lease agreement language.
What page is that on?
It's on the summary. 104 in the packet.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recommend approval of town land lease agreement to support Garfield County's fiber infrastructure project.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Hanahan to approve the lease agreement language for the town land agreement to support Garfield County fiber infrastructure. Seconded by Trustee Poston. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order. Can we go back and revisit the Rizalanda? We need to have a motion to continue the public hearing, please.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to continue, for the continuation of the Rizalante amended preliminary plan public hearing until January 22nd, 2024.
That was second.
Motion by Trustee Seifert to continue the Rizalanda amended preliminary plan public hearing until January 22nd, 2024. Seconded by Trustee Clausen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry about that one, Sheila.
That's okay.
Uh, next up is the November 2023 financial reports. Turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't ready. So this is for the month of November. With that, 92% of the year has passed, we are doing very well with our sales tax. We're almost right at what we got last year, and we still have a month left to go, so we're doing quite well with that. Sitting at about 110%. Use tax, we're at 121% of what we anticipated on getting, and we're right on track with our trash, water, wastewater and irrigation fees for the, the time of the year. We are a little low in revenues for the water treatment plant, but there were grants that we thought we were going to, to use, but didn't end up using the, those funds, so we'll get that revenue next year whenever we do use those funds and then get the reimbursement for that. Silt Housing Authority, we're a little behind on the revenues, but December, we will have both November and December's rental deposited in December, so you'll see that catch up. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any question?
Nothing for me.
Numbers are great.
Looks good.
Looks good, yep. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Administrator and Staff Reports.
Okay, a couple of things I wanted to just highlight in my report. I guess, I mean, a couple of things here. I, I had said earlier that we were going to move forward spending about $75,000 in the budget for renovating the garage base to do some kind of expansion either of community development or, or the police department. We kind of talked about that a little bit. We're going to move forward with that. And then I was reminded by the fire chief that, last week, that we'd had a conversation about, talking about a public safety facility, which would include the police department. So I'm going to take a step back from, from that, because I think we need to fully investigate that before we just, and this is, it's my fault. I, I was wanting to get something done and realized that I hadn't, hadn't dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's yet. So we're, we're, our group of town employees who are involved in this, as well as the fire, a couple of the fire district folks are going to meet tomorrow morning and, and kind of put together a list of alternatives. Some of the square footage that we think we could push into or redevelop would be some of the alternatives, along with some kind of a public safety facility, which would all, which would be an all-new facility, probably on the location of the current fire station, 61? Station 61 here on Main Street in Silt. So we're going to be talking about that a little bit. I don't know how long exactly that'll take us to kind of put something together. We've allocated about two hours tomorrow to brainstorm it. But what I would like to, to suggest is if we could get one or two trustees, board members to volunteer to, not necessarily come tomorrow, but to come at a future meeting to kind of hear sort of the alternatives, maybe give us some insight from a, you know, from your standpoint. It would be, you know, maybe helpful. Or maybe we would want to do it to a full board with no intermediate step. Either way, is fine with me, but I wanted to just kind of throw that, that suggestion out there if, if, if that might make sense to anybody.
Is that kind of a follow-up to the meeting we had that, with the chief and that before?
Yeah, yeah, because we have, I think, Jerry, you were there, but was, was there another trustee at that meeting? I don't, I don't recall one.
No, I think it was, I was there, and then we've talked, yeah, Leaf was there.
Yeah, yeah, we had both fire district and, and police folks and, and I, Trey was there.
Yeah, Trey was there.
Maybe Amy, so.
I mean, I'd, I'd volunteer, but I, I kind of think something of that magnitude might be better, you know, if the whole board is involved.
Well, everybody's going to, everybody's going to get the same briefing. We just want to kind of sort of troubleshoot it, make sure we're covering all the bases that trustees would like to have. But I'm fine to do it that way, too.
So do you want to do it?
Sure, I'll do it. I'm just not available tomorrow.
No, we wouldn't do it tomorrow. We want to-
I know, he just said that.
Tomorrow's just a rest, we got to get the rust off, for sure.
When do you think you do it?
Maybe a month out or so.
I'll go.
Okay.
As well, too, if you want to.
I can get there with enough advance notice.
I need to.
Oh, we can't have three.
Can't have three?
We can have two.
Otherwise it's a media.
I'll be an alternate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Flores and Clausen. Hanahan is an alternate.
Coming off the bench as usual.
Welcome to my world. You got those names, Dan? Okay, perfect.
Yeah. Right here.
All right, that's great. FMLD Awards Luncheon is coming up on the 19th, I think. They've sent an invitation, we passed it along in the board packet. It's from 11 to 1 in Glenwood Springs, if anyone wants to join in the fun. That's at Mortgage Commons. We just need to get an RSVP to them pretty soon. This is where they announce the awards for last year.
Last year, and this is where they announced the grantee of the year.
Right.
That's extra $1,000, I think.
And this is where they give us our plaques that hang all over the wall in there, so it's, it's kind of a big deal. But if anybody has that day open and with, or, or that time open, 11 to, 11 to 1 Friday, January 19th. I think Trey's going to go, and I think I'm going to go to IMTPR that day.
And Amy's going.
And Amy's going to go, too, yep.
Oh, I'm going to be gone.
Well, let us know in the next 24 hours or so, so we can RSVP for you to go, because it's coming up. I don't, I don't even know if they had a-
Yes, they did. It's, um-
Today at 3 o'clock?
The 15th.
Okay. So we have a little more than 24 hours, Derek, sorry. Okay. And then in your, at your seat today, you found a traffic packet, I'm, I'm calling it. These are the traffic counter, traffic counter information and some analysis done by Derek Walter, our, our town engineer, on some of the traffic speeds. There's also some information about some of the low-hanging fruit that are, that the town is working with to do some of these proactive measures about, we've talked about these sidewalk, or these crosswalks and so forth and so on. And then, then in the back of that packet, you'll see some speed data and some of how it's analyzed. I'd like to point out in the very last page of that packet is an explanation as to what the 85th percentile refers to that's in the packet. I, I kind of rushed everybody to get this done and to you, even though we're not, I don't plan on having a conversation about it tonight, but I wanted to get this to you because I know it, there was a lot of interest in this, but we just haven't had the time to, to really put together, I think, a discussion item with you and a presentation. But we are planning on coming back with a lot more, more information as those cameras are deployed, or not cameras, yeah, cameras on the brain, don't I? Those radar monitors are, are deployed, and we can do a little better job of, 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 I think, responding to some of your questions that we'll have then. We'll either do a work session or, or if we have a light meeting, we'll do it during a regular meeting. Either, either the end of March or the first part of April is what, kind of what we're shooting for to make sure we get that information out. And then, and if you have questions on any of that stuff, don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I'll be glad to put you in touch with either Trey or Derek or Chief Kite, and we can try to get some of those, some of that information. Or we can just answer it when, when the meeting comes up in April. Last but not least, on my list, and then we can take some board comments, and then we'll go into executive session to talk about this, this real estate, some of these real estate items. The last thing I have for you tonight is I'm here tonight to announce my retirement. I plan to ride off into the sunset. Actually, I don't even know, I, I don't have a speech, but I, I alerted the staff today, this afternoon, that my time has come, and I'm setting my last day as, as March 15th. I had a conversation with the mayor right before the meeting and told him that I am willing to work with the board to the extent that you wish me to, to help with whatever transition. And I know it's kind of early to talk about that at this moment, but I'm certainly willing to, to help however I, I can. I, I've got a letter here that I'll, I'll pass out to all of you, but it's been a real honor to work with you. This board is, has been very good to me, and you have been a, a real joy to work with, if I can use that word. Not without challenge. We've all, we've, you know, but we've done some great things together, and I really appreciate your support. Likewise, the, the staff here is, is just a very professional staff. They work hard for the people here in Silt, and, and I've just really enjoyed my time with them as well. So it's, it's certainly bittersweet, but some, I've told the mayor that I've had a few people tell me that when you know, you know. And even as recently as last September, October, when we were having our conversations about my work performance, I, I didn't know then. It's really came upon me in kind of a more sudden sort of fashion. And so I am grateful for this opportunity, but it's time for me to move on. But like I said, I'm certainly willing to, to help out how I can to transition, because I want to make sure we stay in good hands.
I didn't plan to cry in a meeting.
I'm trying hard.
Well, I hope it's cloudy that day, because, you know, if you want to ride to the sunset, if it stays cloudy the next day, it's on.
Dramatic.
Wow, I thank you for all your hard work. You've, you've definitely changed the momentum of this town.
What size shoes do you wear? Because the next guy's got to have a little bit bigger. They're small, actually.
I think we all appreciate everything Jeff has done for us. You know, I hate to say I was disappointed when he told me, but I was disappointed when he told me. But, but I understand, you know, everyone gets to a point in their life, and if you, you do, you get that feeling, you want to move on, you want to move on. So as far as the board's concerned, our next steps are, you know, Jeff has mentioned that he'd be willing to help us, you know, look for a replacement. So I think he's a very knowledgeable and wise resource to use in that search.
Yes. I just, yeah. I assumed you'd be here to the end of your contract, at least, you know, but.
Well, all I can say, it's been an absolute honor working with you.
Thank you.
Caring person, very knowledgeable, caring about the community, really organized, and really a person that listens not only to the employees, but listens to the people from the town and listens to the board and really performs. It's been great and awesome working alongside such, such an amazing person, professional. You will be truly missed.
Thank you.
Well, but definitely.
I, I would be remiss to say this again, but-
You can still change your mind.
The staff, I, I couldn't, I mean, I couldn't do it without incredible staff. I mean, these guys are great. And, and I told the mayor, too, that the, the board has been great to work with, and it's wonderful to have a board that doesn't, it's, you know, stays at 30,000 feet most of the time until there's something that needs to get some boots on the ground, and then you come in and you help. So that's, that's been great to, to work with you, too. So I, I would, I'm not going to let it lie that I am the only person here.
I only have one prerequisite. We need a short list of replacements before you can leave. Just lock the door from the outside. No, thank you for everything. I think you were part of the reason I started working within the town in any capacity. So you, I'm your fault.
I don't know how to interpret this.
Donna's proud.
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Okay. Well-
Next up?
Next up, Administrator and Staff comments and up- Next up, administrator and staff comments and updates from the board and board comments.
Okay, so when do we hear back, Trey, from the Goko grant for the community park?
We were, hello, we were here something around January twenty-second on if we go to stage three. And if we go to that stage, we will find out in March if we got funded.
Okay, got it.
So it's still a few months down the road.
Okay, and our, another question would be, are we still contracted with that grant writing? I forgot her name.
Yes, Deborah.
Deborah, that's right, okay. Because I believe she was super helpful to us. She helped us write quite a few grants that we were pretty successful with, so, yep, okay.
Trey and I talk to her every day.
Almost.
We, we have emails with her very frequently.
What is it? Bi-weekly, we do an update with everything.
Yeah.
Or something like that with her.
I wonder if she'd like to be town administrator.
Maybe.
Not so quick, I'm not ready. I need to process this.
Did she not try that once?
Yeah, I know, yes.
Let, let us at least sleep over it.
Sorry, I didn't mean it that way.
Everyone's like, bye.
Not me.
I, I totally understand. And I will sleep better knowing you have someone to, believe me.
Oh, for sure.
That's it for me.
Well, yeah. No, that, I don't have much, I don't have anything.
Um, the whole lot, I did venture up to the horseshoe pits, saw the sign that's up there. Very nice job with it. Everything was great up there and I can't wait for next summer. A little chilly up there right now to be throwing those things, but I, I think it's gonna be a, a really neat thing for the town to build to have some really great events.
Good. Trustee Clausen?
Um, it's January, I have, I have a list, anyway. Um, my first question is the update on the lot by the Holiday Inn Express. You know, the ones that they bought for the electric charging station? And I thought we had something like by February, they needed to.
They had a hundred and eighty days to file something.
Yeah, and I just didn't know if there's any progress made on that.
They had a staffing turnover and are working on a new proposal that they'll present to the board.
Soon.
Soon, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We, we do intend to come to the board probably that first meeting in February with a legal update on all of that. What you're, because you're right, that does expire in February. And then the town can start moving toward the process of reacquiring the land if it so chooses, has two years to do that. Obviously, I think it's obvious, the town would rather have an operating business there. So there'll be some conversation about, they're gonna come in and do, give you, let you know what, where, what they're doing and where they are with it. We have been contacted by their design team and they're moving some things forward now, so. Fingers crossed.
Got you. And then I have some concerns at Autumn Ridge. And my concerns are, I'm seeing them building huge burn piles out there. And I really don't want them to burn anything in town, just because it's against town code to burn anything. So I just saw the big burn piles there and I just, you know, wanted to kind of make sure that they don't do it in town. Just because then that, that just sets a precedent if they do it, other people to do it. And just because there is some controversy over that, I just don't want them to be burning those piles over there. And another thing I noticed at Autumn Ridge, down below by the old restaurant, there were piles of concrete and they're burying those, that concrete with dirt. And I don't think you're supposed to landfill things, you know, in town either. So that was my other concern with Autumn Ridge, because I don't exactly know what they're burying besides the concrete. And I just don't want that to be, you know, an issue in the future. And then I had, actually, an ex P and Z member asked me about the entrance to the River Run, the tiny homes. Their concern was, you know, how come it's, and I, I understand it's winter, you, you know, and the ground's frozen. But their concern was, why hasn't this entrance been built yet? And I know there's the storage unit component of that, too. And do you have any sort of update on us, what they're trying to do or, you know, timeline?
We did present them with a list of things that need to be changed to come into compliance and that was given to them today, so we will know more about their response in the future.
Okay.
In the pretty near future here.
Okay, got you. And, you know, I, I had a couple of questions earlier in the day, so, so I came over here and asked a couple of questions and then I had the thought of, because we were discussing, you know, the, the employee handbook. And anyway, the issue came up with overtime hours. And right now, you know, town staff, they just get comp hours, you know, so then they get hours if they work overtime. And in the future, I'd like to see it changed to where they actually get compensated for overtime. You know, or at least have the option to do comp hours or get paid for it. And I know, obviously, we've already approved this budget, but maybe for next year's budget. And yeah, I mean, it would be an added expense, but I feel it would be a benefit to the employees that work overtime. So that's, that's just my thought on that.
Aren't they getting paid? I mean, oh, they're.
They're getting comp hours right now, but they're not actually getting paid any overtime pay.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I know.
Yeah. Yeah, so if they work five hours overtime, yeah, they can take five hours off.
Do we still have the HR committee?
Yes.
Who, who is in the HR committee?
Jerry and I.
We can certainly present that.
Yeah, because if, if we're trying to, you know, do things for the employees and, you know, kind of add some more benefits to them, I think that's, and, and yes, like I said, it would be an added cost to the town, but I, I think that's a good.
And like, the, the cost is the same.
Well, currently, they get, like, so with Chris's example, if they work five hours over their forty hours in a week, then they get seven and a half hours of comp time that they can take off. So that is within the two thousand eighty hours that we have budgeted for them, because we're not paying them, they're just not here. You know what I'm saying? We're not paying them extra, they're just not here. So it's still within that two thousand eighty hours. So paying them overtime would actually cost us more.
More.
Do you, do you follow me?
I see where you're going, yeah.
But they're getting time and a half off comp time, so they're, they're just, they're choosing to take the comp time versus the overtime. Basically, give the individual the, the opportunity to do whichever way they want.
Right, currently, they, there's no choice. They get the comp time and Chris is wanting them to have the option of either having the additional time off or the extra money on their paycheck.
So if.
And we're small enough that they can just write it on their timesheet. It, it wouldn't be where they'd have to opt in to getting paid for it all the time or opt in to having the, the extra time off. We're small enough that they can just write it on their timesheet that they want the money this time or they want the time.
So what, what would, I think, would you be able to have a dollar amount on what that would cost yearly?
Um, I can certainly estimate what it would cost if everybody chose to get money instead of the comp time.
Yeah, for.
But for it to be accurate, because you don't know who's going to choose extra time off or who would choose the money. But I can certainly give you a dollar amount for the hours in 2023 that were comp hours.
I think you would want to have the highest.
That would be kind of a worst case.
Worst case scenario, yeah.
Right, correct.
Like we talked about earlier, a lot of that's gonna depend on the snow.
Yeah.
A lot of my guys get, their comp hours come when we're plowing snow. So we don't get snow, won't have as much, but if we get a heavy snow year, then it might be more.
Right. They get paid their regular salary then on that comp time?
It would be, it would be time and a half.
Yeah.
The, no, the comp time we have now, if they work two hours of overtime, they basically get three hours of comp time, which is like vacation time. So in the next week, two weeks, they need to take off to do something. They can use that three hours and take it off and get paid for it.
And they're compensated to a time and a half.
At their normal pay, that's what I'm saying. They're getting their normal pay, right.
Yeah.
So they're still getting paid if they're just the extra. So basically, they're still getting, I mean, they're still getting overtime, they're getting five hours that equals seven.
Yeah, it's just vacation time, basically, not pay.
Yeah.
Not extra pay on.
Not adding to their household income.
Yeah.
When does the comp time expire? How, how long do they have to use it?
They can only carry forty hours into the next year.
What happens to the extra?
They lose it if they don't use it.
So it, it doesn't roll?
Only forty hours roll over.
And they can't cash out either?
No.
Okay.
Use it or lose it?
Yes, correct.
I think definitely should be a conversation item.
Later on.
Later on.
Let's move on, yeah.
I think start with the HR committee.
Yeah, exactly.
Get that ball rolling.
Next one, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, and then the, the other question I had was the, the, I know the, the dirt on the school of property came from the alley, the new sewer line and everything.
They've been moving it.
Oh, have they been moving it? Okay.
Yes.
Got you.
It will go away when we get that project finished up.
Okay.
And they have been working on moving it out.
Okay, got you. And then to, to kind of piggyback on that, and I, I think the horseshoe pits are wonderful and great and everything, so I'm not, you know, saying anything negative about those. But are those horseshoe pits, are they on, all on town property or are they on?
They are partially on our E2 property as well.
Okay.
And they were made aware that we were doing it and we had the go-ahead from them to go ahead and put that on there.
Okay, all right, I was, you know, just, just curious, when I saw, saw the piles of dirt, you know, so all right, well, thank you for that. And, and the last thing, I like, well, the bridge at the river preserve, I went over and looked at it and yeah, I mean, I went under, under the ropes and everything, but that sucker's really steep.
It's getting redesigned.
I, I had to crawl up that thing.
That's why it's not open yet, because once the arches got put up and we put the decking on it, we realized, it was, realized how steep it is, so it's getting redesigned and we already have the parts coming to.
Oh, okay.
Correct that problem.
All right, thank you. Yeah, you know, like I said, you know, I, I'm just curious, because I'm like, I can't get up this thing unless I'm on my hands and knees. So, all right, well, thank you. Okay, um.
Trustee Seifert?
So I see you must have called the state on them signs, I see they were out there the next day, or somebody was. But I see they, like, the one they just sprayed the piece.
Yeah, they sprayed it orange.
Yeah.
That, and they know, I've told them a couple of times, that sign's laying in front of our shop up at the yard. So I don't know if they just didn't remember it was up there to go get it or what, but yeah.
There's them couple there and then the one on Sixteenth Street for the underpass and then the one the other end, so. But you must have called them, because they were there the next day and what I've seen, their fix was to spray paint it. At least put something over, you're still gonna drive over and tear a tire, whether it's orange or not, so. That's all I got.
Mayor Proton?
Just another thank you to Silk PD for taking the time earlier this evening to show me how that flock system is gonna work in practice and what their control measures are. Obviously, I was the biggest cynic before, but again, trusting in the people makes it an easier decision for me. So thanks again for the time.
Is it, is it? I got nothing, except an executive session. So. I will read some stuff here and then we will get the executive session all set up in the breakout room, so.
Mr. Mayor, when you get to the description, I'm gonna add a little language to that.
Okay. All right. Well, so I moved to go into executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of any real, personal or other property interest under CRSS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A, discussion on the purchase of property.
And the property is located in the vicinity of the intersection of Front Street and Seventh Street and Grand Avenue and Seventh Street.
But those additional items, would someone like to make a second to that motion?
I will second.
Okay. Motion entered executive session by the mayor, seconded by trustee Clausen. All who's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will get set up here in our breakout room.
I'm here, no, I'm here.
When the executive session has concluded, no formal action was taken in the executive session, but negotiators were given direction. The participants in the executive session were no one entered the executive session and no one left the executive session. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of open meetings law, I'd ask that you state your concerns for the record.
Yep.
Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by trustee Seifert to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Clausen. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed?
See, fellas, thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
I had to hit myself there, sorry.